Good evening. Thank you all for coming. I have to call in this meeting of the Oak Park City Council to order. Please stand for the pledge.
For the pledge. Our pledge is to provide a United States of America with a republic where it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Jolynn Williams is your deputy city clerk. Would you please call her?
Mayor Protim Edgar. Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Ratner.
Here.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Here.
We have four of them.
Need a motion to approve the adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion carried. The consent agenda are routine items presented without discussion. Any council member can have one of those items dropped from the blanket motion and considered separately. A. Regular city council meeting minutes for September 18th. B. Beautification Advisory Commission meeting minutes for June 20th. C. Traffic Safety Board meeting minutes for August 13th. D. Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission meeting minutes for August 10th. E. Request to approve payment of invoices from MDOT for the Nine Mile Road and Eight Mile at Hubble projects for the total amount of $284,575.26. F. Request to approve payment of invoices from OHM Advisors for GIS DWAM grant, Nine Mile Road CE and Capital Avenue easement for the total amount of $54,602.12. G. Request to approve payment application number six in the amount of $66,931.24 and change order five in the amount of $26,871.32 in our favor to Inner City Contracting of Detroit, Michigan for the 2023 Water Main and Road Replacement Project M750. Finally, H. Licenses New and Renewals submitted for October 2nd, 2023. It's their motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A roll call vote, please.
Mayor McLaughlin?
Here. Yes.
Councilmember Ratner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. I don't see any elected officials here ready to report out, so I'd like to turn this meeting over to our director, Steve Cooper, for a special retirement recognition for Ted Kozlowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have in front of me a special recognition prepared by City Council and the City Manager in honor of Ted Kozlowski, who's been employed with the city since 1983 to 2023. And I'll read from the actual word. Says the Mayor, Council, and Administration of the City of Oak Park, Michigan, in testament and tribute to the distinguished public service and lasting contributions to the City of Oak Park, and its residents wish to express their sincere appreciations to Ted Kozlowski. You have served as a pillar of integrity in this organization and have helped to set cities' high standards of excellence. You have served as a source of guidance, support, and leadership for your colleagues. And it is those qualities that will leave a lasting imprint on the City of Oak Park. Your dedicated spirit, wealth of knowledge, and overall dedication to the City of Oak Park will be sorely missed. It's signed by the Mayor, Mayor, and Mayor McLaughlin on behalf of City Council and also by our City Manager, Eric Tonguey. Also, I'd just like to add a couple of words. Ted Kozlowski's last official day will be October 31st, and he has served honorably with the City of Oak Park for the past 40 years. Twenty-eight of those years as a Public Safety Officer, obtaining the rank of Sergeant. In the last 12 years, he served as our Record Supervisor with the Public Safety Department. He was a highly decorated officer. He received numerous awards and citation during his distinguished career. He also had a very distinguished career in the military branch, the Army branch of our military service. He retired with the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. Ted is passionate and famous throughout public safety for his recycling efforts. Besides that, he's a great man and humanitarian. For well over a decade, he has single-handedly organized many Christmas food drives from Public Safety in the City of Oak Park to help feed the needy and, under privilege, for decades, he has also volunteered and been a staple at the Pancake Breakfast for our Fourth of July Parade, as well as many other private volunteer endeavors. I'd like to thank him for his loyal and dedicated service to the City of Oak Park. I wish him well as he continues the next chapter of his life. He's not here to receive this award, but I will make sure that he actually gets it. So, thank you, Mayor and Council.
We're delighted to have had you service for all those years. He is always ready to help. Always ready. Cooks a mean piece of bacon and sausage. Pancake breakfast. Next, we have public hearing. We have a public hearing on the establishment of an industrial development district at Bolinger Motors Incorporated, 14925 West. And I will gavel. The public hearing right now is open. Kim Maroney, our director, would like to explain the different parts of this industrial development district.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am here to discuss the establishment of an industrial development district for Bolinger Motors. That is the first step. And then the second item that is on the agenda for public hearings is actually granting a certificate of exemption. Establishing the district does not change the zoning of the district. It is currently industrial and will remain that way. What this does is setting up the district allows City Council to consider a certificate of exemption for any projects that they may do on the site for relief of taxes. The tax relief would only be valid for improvements that are made after the industrial district is established and a certificate approved, and it would be 100% tax abatement on real property, which would mean physical improvements to the building or addition to the structure, and a 50% tax abatement on any personal property that is purchased for the facility. They are planning to invest half a million dollars into the facility over the next several months, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Wonderful. I understand there will be 237. Is this new, high-paying jobs?
So, over the next five years, they are projecting that they will add 237 new full-time jobs. The majority of them are, yes, high-paying, high-tech engineering jobs.
Engineering.
Correct. Yeah, they are an electric vehicle company. They just began manufacturing their vehicles at a plant in Livonia, and this location in Oak Park is actually their headquarter location. Unfortunately, their current facility is not large enough to fit any new additional employees, which is why they need to make this investment.
Wonderful. Someone from Bolinger here to...
Yeah, Jason Fuskas is here.
Wonderful. Ken, you give us your dog and pony show.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jason Fuskas. I'm the General Counsel for Bolinger Motors. And for the sake of brevity, let me simply say it has been truly a pleasure to call Oak Park our home these past few years, and we hope that the motions that you are considering tonight and the investment we're looking to make is the first of many to show and exemplify our continued commitment to Oak Park, Oakland County, and the state of Michigan. As Kimberly mentioned, we are quickly expanding. We've grown from 35 employees to 85 in the last 12 months and have an aggressive growth plan this next five years as we approach our start of commercial production, and our goal is to continue to call Oak Park home. So, we're glad to be here, and we thank you for your support and...
Can you tell the folks who don't know about you just a little bit about what you do?
Absolutely. Our founder, Robert Bolinger, had a vision to be part of the electrical vehicle movement. He is an avid environmentalist, believes in electric vehicles, and saw an opportunity in the mid-class commercial market, which was a market that wasn't being addressed by current companies across the nation. So, we are looking at building mid-class commercial chassis cabs that can support a wide variety of uses, whether that be mid-mile delivery, refrigeration trucks, electric utility trucks. It could be for small business owners. So, wide variety of uses with these vehicles, and we're hoping to build them right here in Michigan.
That's amazing. That's amazing. We're proud to have you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if this is for you.
This is a City Council member, Solomon Radner. Had to check.
Thank you. Are there any other high-tech jobs here in Oak Park? This is going to be the first, right?
Yeah, there are no other high-tech facilities in the City of Oak Park.
Wow.
Yeah, we are also hoping with their expansion here that there could be spin-off projects of partners that they work with currently. We are doing the new industrial development -- or we're not, but Corso Projects is doing the new industrial development next door, so that could facilitate some of those companies.
Wow, great work. Great work, Ken, and welcome. I know you've been here for a while, but expanded and welcome to Oak Park.
Nice. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to ask a question or make a comment during the public hearing? Did you... You have the cards? Is that for...
So, I have first, Wakehouse.
Hello, council. My name is Ray House. I live adjacent to my neighbor, and I'm really wondering why would they want to build that in my backyard. Councilmember, would you want your industrial park in your backyard? So, in the future, this is research and development. What if something goes wrong? There's a thermonuclear meltdown or some type of chemical something happens. My homes are pretty close proximity to that. I'm not in favor of having... If you want it in your backyard, let's have it in your backyard. I don't want it in my backyard. Light, the light, the noise, the potential, it's really great. As I understand, which I'm sure someone would like to correct me, this is for tax purposes and advantage. They have the ability, and they got more than a $500,000 grant for expansion. They can do that without your approval for the tax exemption, for the exemption, the phrasing there as far as the exemption itself. So, we should be able to do this themselves while getting a free ride from the council. And if you want it in your backyard, let's put it in your backyard, not mine. And last but not least, then, this is about changing our motto from being a family city to an industrial development city.
Thank you. I think that's...
Can we hear from Mr. Fuskas again?
Sorry?
Can we hear from Mr. Fuskas?
Oh.
A response?
A response.
If you have one.
Is... I don't... I don't think there's been any noise or danger in that building. Is there someone who can speak to that? Yes?
We should probably finish hearing all the public comments and then move on to questions.
Got it.
So, next I have Meredith Long.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Give us your name and address.
Hi, yes. My name is Meredith Long. This is my father, Michael Long. Sorry, it takes a little longer for our family to come up here. My husband.
Corey Clark, moral support.
We're the actual only family in Oak Park that directly abuts this property, and I can say and I will be following up with some of the video. Up to this point, we bought the house in 2001, and it was a much smaller parcel at that time. The industrialness of it was a very small influence in our life. Then the wall goes up, the changes to the building, and I've been so happy with the work that Oak Park's been doing. I volunteered for the city for years on two different commissions. I am an avid, avid Oak Park supporter and Oak Park business supporters. The problem is, we're not a wealthy city. We're not a wealthy city by any means, and we are a city with citizens that continually approve every millage that comes across our voting. We support everything. And to be a citizen here and to see the news with one of the fastest-growing industries in the world, in the world, mind you, tons of money, tons of money is happening right now. To give them a tax credit is just so deeply unfair, especially considering as a citizenry, we vote for this city time and time again. I doubled the size of my house. My husband put his hard sweat in it. We're not here to get a tax abatement for the work we did. We happily pay our taxes for the City of Oak Park. And if you... I have a lot of friends in the automotive industry and a lot of people in battery. They're hybrid. We're not getting 250 jobs. We're not getting them. We might get some, and I don't doubt your building will expand, but don't think that that's all going to come to the City of Oak Park, because it's not. And if you think it is, just talk to the City of Detroit and find out what the villagers promise them. There's always promises. It never comes through, because at the end of the day, they are a for-profit entity. They are not here for us. They are here to make money. So, I support that. I would love to see you make money. I love the fact that you're in Oak Park. There's plenty of industrial areas in Oak Park for companies to grow into. I just do not support a tax abatement. I'm sorry, can't do it. Heavy road traffic, have no idea what the trucks are going to look like, but I guarantee you, if the truck traffic picks up on 11 Mile, I'm never passing another millage again. And I will be a very vocal opponent in that, because that's an externality that companies do not pay for, citizens pay for. And I will be following up with my noise videos and the light pollution that we've been putting up with to this point, because we didn't think we had a choice.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Are you on Two Layer?
We are, yes. We're one of, well, two families that live on Two Layer.
You're the two houses on Two Layer?
Yes. We own three, we own two-thirds of Two Layer.
Okay. I've driven past that a thousand miles, because I live a block away.
Yeah.
So, okay. It's nice to finally meet the owners of those homes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for the whole family coming.
Next, I have a question for Randy Bernstein.
May I ask one question, please? To the reference of Bolinger. In what city do you live?
Exalt.
Yes. Northville. Northville is not Oak Park. I wish I could live in Northville. I would enjoy it very, very much. However, I purchased 1.99 acres of what I considered to be residential area in 2002. So, I've been there 20 years. For 20 years, we've managed to accommodate noises, garbage trucks flopping their metal cans up and down to dump the garbage. We have trucks that come in and back up to the rear door and beep, 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 beep. I realize those are safety things, and I don't really oppose those.
Is that happening, like, too early in the morning?
Yes.
Yes.
I ran out like a crazy person at five in the morning.
We can, without any cross-talk, we can report that to our Chief of Police, who is sitting right next to me. And what time in the morning and what day, if you can, if you can give us the time and the day, like, they come on Tuesday or Thursday, and they come at 5:00 in the morning.
They stopped coming at 5:00 in the morning when I ran out there like a crazy person screaming in my pajamas, telling them to go away.
Is it still going on or not?
It has not, because I'm terrified.
Okay. If it happens again...
It does happen extremely early in the morning.
Starts at 7:00 AM.
Yeah.
Because we call the police on it.
Yeah.
Because I'm the house right in front of the GFL.
Ah, yeah. It's a very loud dumpster.
Thank you. That we can take care of quite easily. Thank you so much.
One quick question, just to finish off. I appreciate the fact that you would like to increase the size of your plant. I would need to know which direction the increase in noise would go. Is it going to go towards the back, towards the storage units? Is it going to go towards that large undeveloped plot that you own to the right of your present place? I've always been very, very skeptical of big business. I've worked in the foundry industry for 35 years. I've been in Saginaw, I've been in every major city around here. I would like to just say thank you very much, and notice that, for me, from a personal note, this matter has already been decided.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Randy Bernstein. I own the house right in front of GFL Recycling Center. What I want to know from, you know, Mr. Fuskas here, I want to know exactly what you plan on doing when it comes to building an industrial complex, because, like I said, I'm right in front of the recycling center, and let me tell you what we have to go through. First of all, there's trucks that go up and down rain up until the GFL, and they park there, and you hear they're diesel trucks. I can't keep my windows open at night, as you hear them starting at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, and they stand there. At 7:00, we used to call the police if they started before 7:00. So, we found out that the noise, you know, has to be, cannot start before 7:00 AM. So, you know, they don't start, they start at that point. You hear the doors going up, and then the trucks come on in, and they, you know, come in and they, you know, go and dump their, you know, their trash into the bins. So, at 7:00, I got dogs, and they constantly are barking at them. They lift up above, they put a wall behind us, and it has, you know, it's eight feet tall, and you still hear everything. They have alarms going off, like they said, sometimes all weekend long. This past weekend was one of the times. During the week, they also have alarms going off, too. So, I want to know exactly what you plan on putting there, because I don't want to see more... There's one other thing. What the GFL does is, they put a lot of dust in the air, so every morning I come out, there's a layer of dust on my car, you know, on the backyard. We got some black mold crap that's growing on the lawn in the backyard, and sometimes there's stuff that comes over the, you know, back. I don't want to see that type of thing coming down, you know, all the way over to from Bolinger. If it's just for development and research in that facility, because it's a, you know, for, because it's the headquarters, fine. Do it all because, you know, it's a good thing to have, you know, EV development for small trucks, because it's, you know, been tempted by several different companies. If they're successful, great. As long as a new, you know, industrial, you know, manufacturing plant isn't going to be put on that beautiful stretch of land, that's fine. Do they plan on, you know, doing any type of building, you know, industrial building there for manufacturing? Okay. Because I hope, as I said, research and development and headquarters, that's not a problem. If it has to do with any type more manufacturing, I'm definitely against it, because I've had enough up here, you know, of, you know, what GFL does, and I wish I went to, there was a...
Mr. Bernstein, thank you. Thank you for coming.
We regard that ahead of time.
Where do you live? Do you live on Boardman?
Yeah, Boardman and Randy come together. This one, this one that's right there. You know where Rocky and Boeckel is on the garage door?
Thank you for coming. Any others for public comment? No. One more. Two more. Thank you. Oh, that's for later. Thank you. All right. Could we have Kim Maroney come back and...
Mayor.
Yep. I think she has something for later, I think. Wait, wait.
Did you want to speak about, for the public hearing or a different topic?
No.
That would be a different, at the end of the meeting, a public comment.
There's two public times when you can come up.
Sorry.
And this one is just about this Bolinger Motors thing, and at the end, we'd love to have you come up and talk about any other topic related to Oak Park. So, hang in there. All right. Yes. This is, as I understand it, there'll be no experimenting or anything. It's kind of an office building, correct?
Essentially, it's an office building that they will fabricate prototype vehicles in, which is, and I'll let Jason speak more about it when he comes up to answer some questions, but it's in no way going to cause a chemical explosion. That entire area over there on 11 Mile has been zoned industrial for decades.
Since the city started its first master plan.
And I would say of all industrial uses, this is probably one of the least intense uses. So, I think they're fortunate with their concerns that that is the type of use in those, in that location. I know I did have a conversation with Ms. Long last week, and she had the concerns with GFL, which she said she's already rectified with them and hasn't been an issue since. She had a couple other concerns about a light protruding onto her property, which she's going to send me some pictures and video, as well as a stormwater structure that she wanted us to take a look at. So, we're going to follow up with her on those items once we get those. And Councilman Radner, again, what was your question? I apologize.
Yes, my question is actually, I just want to make sure that we're clear about what is being sought here.
So...
They could do what they want to do if they're willing to not get this tax. All they're doing here tonight is asking for a tax exemption. Is that right?
Yeah, so...
They could build the same, everything they're doing, they could build if they want without the tax exemption.
They could. And what they're doing, I know some of the questions were, where is the expansion going? What we're considering tonight in Item B is actually just for rehabilitation of the current facility, so they can reformat the interior space to allow more employees to be in that facility. And they have one area that is, they're going to add a second floor to it inside of the building as well. So, right now, they don't have any plans to expand that current building. There could be in the future, but right now, that's not what's under consideration, and they're...
We're not expanding, and it is office use.
Correct. And they're spending a half a million dollars, not asking for a half a million dollars in tax abatements. And according to our city assessor, the actual abatement that they'll get at the end of this, if it's granted, will amount to not a whole lot of dollars for the city. We're talking in the thousands of dollars, because we're pretty conservative on reassessing properties.
Could you be specific?
How much are you going to...
Yeah.
I don't have a specific dollar figure, because we don't have any actual building drawings or permits. So, the way the state law works is this process needs to happen before they can actually apply for permits or do any work. The assessing will not happen until it's constructed and completed.
What's your best guess?
According to our city assessor, they didn't give an actual dollar amount. They said it will be very miniscule.
Meaning what?
Meaning if, what his analogy is, is if a homeowner today renovated the exterior or interior of their home, putting new carpet, fresh paint on the walls, move a wall, it probably will not increase their taxes, but a few dollars. Obviously, this is a little bit larger scale, but that would be what it would amount to.
So, okay, let's, dollars and cents. They're investing how much into this, about $500,000?
Yes.
They're going to make the property worth how much more, ballpark?
Well, more than likely, it's not going to increase the value of the property too much, because, again, it's rehabilitation of the current facility.
Okay. And then, then the tax increase without this, without coming here today and asking for an exemption, how much would, how much more would we be getting that we're giving up potentially?
Again, it's just, like I said, I don't have an actual number to give you. The assessor was not able to give me one. I'm not an assessor. I wish I could answer that. He just said it would be miniscule.
Miniscule. Okay. So, we're not talking...
I don't...
You can't have a miniscule number.
I was going to say, maybe our finance director, but she doesn't know either, so... And again, without them getting actual building blueprints and plans, they can't make an estimate that's going to be accurate.
We can't, we can't call it like that. A lot of us have the same questions that a lot of you have, but we can't, we can't conduct business that way. Okay? Personally, I'd like to see some sort of estimate. I know that an estimate can be done, a range could be done. We can know if we're talking about $1,000, $10,000, $100,000, or a number closer to any one of those three.
I would say it's probably less than $50,000 over the six-year period.
And what are they paying now?
I don't think I have that number. I don't have that number in front of me. I don't think I have that number, I don't have that number in front of me, my apologies.
Maybe Mr. Puskas knows. Okay, I, I'll tell you right now, I love what you're doing, I love what you're doing for Oak Park, bringing all the businesses here, working with Bollinger to make this happen, I don't have enough information to vote tonight. I, I hope there's nothing that's time constrained by us voting right now that, there are things that are time constrained?
They did want to start construction right away.
I know that they want to, but I'd like to know what's going to happen if they don't because I'm not ready to vote on this tonight.
What additional information can I provide for you?
I'd like to know how much they're paying in taxes and I'd like to know how much we're losing in taxes. Before we say, let's give them an exemption to taxes, I'd like to know how much that is. If they're paying a million dollars in taxes and we're going to give them a ten thousand dollar break to do a five hundred thousand dollar improvement, great, I'll vote yes all day. It depends on what the numbers are. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I just, no, I'm really not. I just, I'd like to know what they're paying and I'd like to know how much...
I could get that information for you in a matter of seconds if you want, Jason to address your other questions while I do that.
All right, thank you.
Evening council members, I guess I'd like to touch on a few different topics. First, the use and purpose of our facilities, second, our plans for expansion, and third, our commitment to the neighborhood. First, our current use of facilities is...
First of all, I think Oak Park's nice in the north though.
I think Oak Park's great, my wife works in Ann Arbor and it was the closest thing we could find in the middle of the two. So we've, we've got a young girl and that was our only goal when we picked our new house. I think Oak Park's wonderful. We had date night here last night, it was great.
Oh, thank you.
And I play hockey at Oak Park Ice Arena, I love Oak Park.
In which league?
Sorry?
In which league?
Detroit Athletic Club has their Sunday afternoon league.
Oh, Sunday, okay.
Which is great, it's also the only league I can find in southeast Michigan that isn't at 11:00 PM on a Tuesday, so it's fantastic, love it. So for use of our facility, as Kimberly mentioned, we are, this is our headquarters in Oak Park, this is engineering, finance, sales, marketing, we are not manufacturing in Oak Park, we have a dedicated manufacturing facility, we have contracted our manufacturing with Roush Industries out of Livonia for our manufacturing, so we are not anticipating any increase in trucks, in noise, in any congestion on any of the roads as a result of the purpose of our facility. This is a building that has a storied history of automotive manufacturing in Oak Park and Kimberly could probably give me a better number, but I think we're the sixth or seventh tenant in this building who has had a focus on automotive manufacturing since it's been built. Eugene and Ed, I'm sure you're familiar with both of them, have owned this building, I believe, since the seventies and this has really been the history of this building since its, since its impetus. Our plans for expansion currently are inside the facility, we see plans for increased headcount capabilities inside the building, which is our goal right now as we continue to expand. As we move outside this building, we're looking for opportunities in current vacant or would-be vacant buildings in the surrounding area. We just took control of the old Hirsch's Landscaping Building, which is across the building from our, from us, this is a building that would have been vacant, but we were able to work with Ed Hirsch and take control of that building under a lease for some of our expansion as well. So our goal is really to positively impact the footprint of this commercial corridor on Eleven Mile in Oak Park and see how we can support the, the current building and the structure that's already there. We have no current plans for physical additions to any of our buildings at the moment. In terms of being a neighbor, we've not currently received any complaints from any of our neighbors regarding noise or light pollution, if there are any, we'd love to hear them. In addition to being our general counsel, I, I do oversee our facilities operations, we are more than happy to look at any changes that need to happen.
How can they contact you?
I'd be happy to give my phone number and email if you'd like. Sure, my phone number is (248) 709-4866 and my email is jpuskas, that's J.P.U.S.C.A.S. at bollingermotors.com. We strive in every way we can to be a good neighbor, we're looking at community benefit additions around our building, I know our head of HR is excited to look at a community vegetable garden, we're looking at the potential for a community dog park, we would love to hear feedback on some of these potential additions for the coming years. But yeah, absolutely, any noise issues, any lighting issues, I, I know all the examples I heard tonight were from other companies, so hopefully none of those examples actually relate to us, but if they did, we want to hear about them and we want to take care of them.
So again, if you have issues with Bollinger, they want to be a good neighbor, the phone number is (248) 709-4866, jpuskas, P.U.S.C.A.S. at bollingermotors.com. And input on what you would like to see them do for the community would also be welcome.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So in regards, you guys do electric truck manufacturing, right? So you're thinking that you're going to expand to having two-hundred-some employees in Oak Park over the next five years, is that because EVs are becoming more mandated and more, what we're moving towards, is that why you, where are you getting that number, I guess, of the amount of employees, do you know?
Sure, we have projected growth plan for the first five years of production, we know what we need in terms of our employee count for various departments that are required to do so, I mean, we can have a long discussion about why we think EVs are going to succeed and specifically in our target market and our class size, would love to do that, it's a great conversation to have, but we're just looking at our needs for the next five years and that's the headcount that our department heads came up with.
Okay, and then second question, there was a phase one, phase two, and phase three in our packet, what's the timeframe in regards to that?
Phase one, we are ready to start imminently, we have construction blueprints, we have architect drawings finalized, we're ready to start the minute this council votes on phase one, which is a complete redo of the first floor of this, of our current facility, that would be done ideally by the end of January of 2024. That'd be followed almost immediately by phase two, which is the addition of a second level in our shop area, which would be converting what's currently more of an industrial shop space into more office space, since we are using this primarily for our headquarters use. That would likely start, and again, now I'm conjecturing, so don't hold me to these dates, but I'd say maybe in March of next year and be done by midsummer.
Does phase, I hate to cut you off, but does phase two expand towards the couple residents that are on...
This is all interior.
This is all interior.
Inside, no expansion.
Yeah, there's no exterior expansion involved in our first two phases.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You want to expand to two-hundred employees, how many do you currently have?
We currently have eighty-five full-time employees and then we have a number of contractors on top of that.
In phase, in phase three, that, when would that be done and is that an expansion?
Yeah.
Outside?
So phase three doesn't have a determined time yet and honestly, it's, it's an expansion of our lobby, we just want to give a little more room up in front of the building, we think it would actually improve the frontal aesthetic of the building, we've got some front vegetable, or flower beds up front right now that we don't think are aesthetically pleasing as you drive by the street, we think this would just improve the aesthetic of the building overall.
So one, two, and three, there is no physical expansion, aside from just the lobby, I think, into their property. Any further questions or concerns?
No, you do well under fire, I see why you became a lawyer.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, can we take questions from...
I think Kim's got the numbers for us.
The public hearing's still open, so if there's any...
Yes, please come up.
I just wanted to give Councilmember Radner his answer, they pay a hundred and ten thousand, that includes personal and real property, so based on their current taxable value, I'd say this would amount to less than ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's, that's very, very helpful, thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question, eighty-five employees, how many work on site?
Eighty-five.
All eighty-five, between Livonia and Oak Park?
Correct.
Which, what's the breakdown?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five in which one?
Oak Park.
In Oak Park, are those two-hundred-and-forty-seven coming to Oak Park?
Correct, not, no, not all two-hundred-and-forty-seven. I come back up to the microphone.
Yeah, go on, sure, please.
Yeah, I'm happy to comment on the two-hundred-and-forty-seven jobs, our headquarters will be Oak Park, the vast majority of the jobs will be located there, most of the jobs in Livonia will be contract jobs that we are paying for with Roush Industries, we will have a few people on site in Roush, mostly purchasing and some quality control people that'll be on site in Roush, their primary place of business will still be listed as Oak Park, but they will be on site in Roush probably three days a week, so I don't want in good faith say that they'll all hundred percent be in Oak Park, but of those two-hundred-and-thirty-seven, I'd say two-hundred would be in Oak Park every day and the other thirty-seven would be a transit between the two locations.
That is first contracting, what does the contracting look like? So of those two-hundred-and-forty-seven, how many did you say were going to be contracted or services?
No, the two-hundred-and-forty-seven is all of our full-time employees and then contracted, yeah.
And then one more question, I'm so sorry, are you guys a union shop for your manufacturing?
Yeah, we're contracted.
I love the work you're doing with EVs, that's for sure. I have a question for our attorney, I wasn't, okay, here's, here's the bottom line here, this building is owned by somebody who's like family to me because he's my family. Am I even allowed, he's my uncle and his partner, yeah, like family because he is family, am I even allowed to vote on this or should I abstain because it's as contentious as it is?
Mr. Bollinger isn't one of your family members?
No, no, not Mr. Bollinger, Mr. Sherison and Mr. Hirsch.
Who owns the property and...
The owner, the property owner.
Ms. Maroni speaks to this, this is the first time hearing, it is sounding...
So just to clarify something, the tax abatement will not essentially benefit Mr. Sherison because it's a triple net lease and Bollinger Motors is responsible to reimburse them for it, so essentially, the incentive goes to Bollinger Motors, not to the owners of the property.
Okay, well, if there's no objection from the attorney, I just wanted to make sure I put that on the record, so.
No objection.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the abatement is not going to the owners of the property.
Okay.
Anything further in the public hearing? If not, I declare the public hearing, yes?
Can I just make one quick...
You need to come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
My name's Mark Phillips, just a suggestion, I don't think many people know about your facility, maybe one Sunday have an open house, invite people from Oak Park to come see what you do and what your plans are, et cetera, and bring something to eat.
And bring what?
Bring something to eat.
Feed them and they will come. Thank you, what a, what a nice idea. All right, there being no further comments, the public hearing is closed and then we go to item eight B, resolution, no, we, that's what we're going to...
That's the resolution.
Resolution establishing an industrial development district for Bollinger Motors Incorporated, fourteen nine twenty-five, West Eleven Mile Road, Oak Park. This one has nothing to do, this piece has nothing to do with the taxes, this is making them a one parcel development district, so we need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. Director Maroni, would you come in, up here and explain this section, please?
So the second portion of this is actually considering the exemption certificate, which would allow for the tax abatement for the five-hundred-thousand-dollar investment that they would be making.
That's C, we're on B.
B is the resolution establishing the district.
Right, so just explain that briefly, yep?
All you would be doing in this resolution is establishing that particular property as an industrial development district, which is required in order to consider item C, which is the tax abatement. Which is the tax abatement.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Everybody clear?
Nope? By making them an industrial development district, are we allowing them to do anything on this property that they're not allowed to do already?
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm that on the record, okay, thank you.
And now they're already in an industrial district, so they're making it.
Right, right, they're already industrial.
Yeah, and just...
So everything they want to do, they can already do.
They can already do it, yes, absolutely, yeah, and a lot of communities establish these districts before any development even takes place in order to incentivize companies to come, so it's not unusual for this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, are we ready to vote on this piece? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes, motion carried, thank you. Public, item eight C is a public hearing on the application of Bollinger Motors for an industrial facilities exemption certificate with respect to the new facility. So please come on up, explain this before we have comments on that particular item.
Sorry, I'll do it in the right timeframe now, so now, this is the public hearing to consider the actual tax exemption certificate for the half million dollars in improvements that they plan to make on the facility and that would be for a period of six years.
And just so we're very clear about this, they'd be paying, they're already paying about a hundred thousand dollars a year?
Hundred and ten thousand.
Hundred and ten thousand.
Hundred and ten, sorry, yeah.
Yep.
They're putting in a half million dollars.
Putting in a half a million and then this basically is saying that because they're putting in that half a million, we're going to let them keep an extra ten grand of extra taxes per year for the next six years, or is it over six years?
So it's, the way our policy internally works for Oak Park, we grant the exemption for the number of years based on the investment, amount of jobs, how long they've been in the community, so based on that calculation, they're eligible for up to six out of the twelve years, so that's why the suggestion is for six years. The hundred and ten thousand will continue to be paid regardless of the tax exemption. If the tax exemption is granted, they would be abated for, let's say if they were increased in their taxes for real property, ten thousand dollars for six years, that ten thousand additional would be abated. And then with personal property taxes, let's just throw a number out, if it was five thousand in additional taxes, fifty percent of that, or twenty-five hundred, would be abated for six years.
Oh, okay, got you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're right, it is miniscule.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions on this part? Ready to vote, roll call, please.
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, sorry to... Okay, we are on C, the public hearing application for the industrial facilities exemption certificate is now open, anybody have anything further to say given what we've learned earlier? Please feel free to come up, any more questions or comments?
I'm sorry.
Come on down, for the same low price.
Again, I'm so sorry and I so respect...
You are, you are doing what every good citizen is supposed to do is care about your city, so please...
I so respect this body and I so respect the work you do and I actually respect the work you guys do as well, the lawyer showing up in a polo, it's very focused, so I'm very impressed with that little psychological tweak. We keep on calling this miniscule, why are you here then? Why are you here if it's miniscule? You can't argue with the word miniscule and say, oh, it's just miniscule, pass it, what's the benefit?
I know the answer to that because I'm a lawyer too.
Yeah, answer.
Okay, well, I mean, the answer is essentially that for the city, the amount that they pay and the amount that they'd be saving and the amount that they're investing, therefore their savings is essentially miniscule. For the company, ultimately, the spreadsheet is all that matters, so to hire their lawyer to come down here to pay his billable hour for an extra few hours to argue this makes a lot of sense.
Sure.
Even if they're just saving a few thousand dollars.
A few thousand dollars is not miniscule to my family.
It's not miniscule to anybody, to any of our families.
Exactly, and it's not miniscule to the city in, when you, when you add it up between businesses, so if you continue to do this with businesses, people are coming to Oak Park because we're a great city, we don't need to throw money at them to have them do it, they will come here because we're amazing, we've got amazing people, we have amazing representation and we care, we don't need to be begging people by giving them money and if it is truly miniscule, just pay it.
Anyone else? Remind us of your name, please.
Ray House, live at Tuller Street, neighbor of them, and essentially, tax abatement for what? This is a multinational corporation, they have money, why we at Oak Park need to give up our motto, "Family City" for industrial development? We don't need that here.
They can already do it.
Yeah, they can do it.
They can do it without the abatement.
Right, they can do it without the abatement, they don't need the tax abatement, that extra money can be used, they should pay, they should pay, they don't need the tax break.
Hearing none. Hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Appreciate you all for coming out and speaking up. Your ideas represent the ideas of many more people, and so it's good to have you here. Item D. Resolution approving the application of Bollinger Motors for an industrial facilities exemption certificate with respect to a new facility. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Is there discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a... I'd like to explain why I'm going to vote in favor of this. Because I've heard what everybody said. It makes a lot of sense. I share a lot of the same concerns. Here's the bottom line. The bottom line is, as a city, it makes sense for us to incentivize people who are willing to invest tremendously in our city. They're coming here, there's going to be a lot more jobs, there's going to be a lot more people working here. They're investing at least a half a million dollars into the building now, and I'd be willing to bet that the restaurants that are within walking distance of where Bollinger's going to be are probably going to be pretty happy that this is happening as well. It's good for the businesses. It's good for everybody when there's... When things are getting better. They're not doing anything that they can't already do. They're going to do it no matter what. Whatever noise there is, if they're violating the law, call the police. If they're bothering you in the middle of the night with lights, call the police. It's going to happen anyway. Whether we approve this or not, the fact of the matter is that the amount that they're investing in the city is worthy of a tax break, in my opinion. So I'm going to vote for this.
And being the...
And I appreciate you both coming under fire tonight, particularly for me.
This is a... An up-and-coming business, and it's cool that it's in Oak Park, and it's going to bring other investments. Economic development gains momentum as more things happen. This has always been an industrial area. We rezone part of it as mixed use, but this is since the beginning of Oak Park, this has been an industrial area. And this is not an industrial use, this is an office use. And I'd like every dollar that we can get also, but I believe that we will be getting dollars from this investment. So are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Redd?
Yes.
Okay, unanimously, we heard you continue to come and give us your opinions. We need you. We need you here. And we need you caring. So thank you. Let's see, we are on page... Oh, I know what's wrong. I would like to read into the record a comment that agrees with the people who spoke from Mayor Pro Tem Julie Edgar. She is absent due to illness. She wanted me to read this statement opposing the request for tax abatement, like several of you who came. My understanding is this tax abatement will not amount to many thousands of dollars, and it will enable volunteer to begin work on a building on its property on 11 Mile Road. I am opposed on principle to giving tax breaks to corporations. In a free market economy, corporations like Bollinger will sink or swim depending on whether the public buys its product. I want to see the company succeed in Oak Park, but the city will lose out on important tax revenues if we subsidize Bollinger's growth. We can't very well go to residents for a tax increase in November and grant a tax break for a for-profit entity. So she agrees with a lot of our people, our residents who came. So moving on to the next item. We have another public hearing. There's going to be three opportunities for people to talk. This one is about... We're going to conduct a public hearing to hear comments and concerns on the following special assessment districts. Number 708 is unpaid utility invoices. 709 is unpaid false alarm invoices. 710 is unpaid property blight invoices. And 711 is unpaid sidewalk replacement invoices. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about the special assessments? Please come to the podium. Make sure that you give us your name and address. Anybody like to speak directly at this time? Welcome, thank you for coming.
My name is Najib Sharif. I'm here for the 10% special assessment.
Real loud and make sure that she can hear your name and address.
My name is Najib Sharif. I am here for... To disagree or object to the 10% water penalty.
And the address?
The address is 21350 Ridge Dale Street. Ridge Dale.
Spell it, please.
213...
Ridge Dale.
Ridge Dale, yeah.
Got it.
Sorry about my accent.
Hearing aids, yep, getting old.
Okay. One thing that I don't understand is, is this in additional 10% penalty on the top of what they're charging, late fee, interest, blah blah?
Right.
Is that what it is?
Right.
I am... This is a rental property. It's my son's house. Right now, my son is... Doesn't live in the state of Michigan, but when he's back, he will start leaving. So we rent it to get a few bucks to help for the kids' education. I have a single family living there, and I'm holding my rents, not increasing. If you are giving a tax break for the reach, you should not charge someone who is struggling. Think about it. This is what happened back 2006 to 2008. Every city, including in Michigan, Southfield, Oak Park, increasing their water bills, increasing the property taxes, then we had a massive foreclosure. A massive... I know the detail. You are already taking or charging 18% mill for second home or rental property, number one. Number two, you start stormwater charges, okay? Stormwater charges. Number three, if someone doesn't pay it on time, they charge late fee and interest. Now you add... You want to add on the top of that 10%? I don't pay the water bill. My tenant pays. I'm here to stand up for her. You have to ask, you are already getting all of these three things and 18% mill on second home or rental property, which is about close to 400, $500. You're going to lose that when my sons moves. Okay? And then you have... You start stormwater, almost about 50, $60 every two months. Late fees already she paying. And on the top of that, you want to add 10%? That's not fair. If you're giving it for a corporation, I don't have any objection for the business to grow. I don't have any objections. But for someone who is struggling, a single mother, and you adding another 10%, fear God. Be... Ask yourself, "I'm comfortable." You are comfortable, but my tenant is not comfortable.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing your...
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Whenever somebody contacts the city after getting notice, after notice, after notice, we work with them without assessing the 10%.
Yes.
The only way the 10% happens is if they receive multiple notices and don't respond to any of them and don't reach out to us. We give payment plans to people all the time for all kinds of utilities, right?
Correct.
Just making sure. Okay, thank you so much.
Wait, we can't take comments from the floor, but you can see us after the meeting.
No, I don't have time. I got to go to pick up my family, and she already cleared some of them, but she's going to clean most of them with water space.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? This is about unpaid utilities, like water, unpaid false alarms, unpaid blight, unpaid sidewalk replacement invoices. Yes, please come up. You can... Did you have a chance to talk to the people in the hallway?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
My name is Kimberly Brantley. I reside at 2111 Kipling, Oak Park. And I'm in agreeance with what he said, because at this present time, there is no water at my house. I'm not residing there because of that. I am unemployed. I continue to access fees, late fees, sewage fees, even though... And disposal, even though there's no one there, is at least $60 per month on top of no water being there. And then I cannot reside there as a result of that. And then, I've reached out to OSHA, you know, United Way, THA. It's a lot of those organizations...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sorry. There are a lot of those organizations...
That help you.
That really do not help us here. OSHA does, but THA is limited. There's a Lifeline program in Detroit, which helps low-income with their water. The Lifeline is not here in Oak Park. So it's really limited for us low-income people, you know, with resources. And I've come from Detroit to Oak Park, and so I know the organizations there that will assist and help. And then St. Vincent de Paul, as well, is one here, but they have limited resources. So it's not a lot of help that we can receive. And I came from homelessness to almost be made homeless again because of no water.
And what happened when you reached out to the city?
OSHA only does so much. You talk about when I reached out to the city of Oak Park?
Yeah.
Not much. I've been in contact.
I mean, have they offered to, you know, make a payment arrangements and put you on a plan or anything?
No, no. I'm actually with United Way, and they pay the portion of the bill. And then they pay a certain amount each month, but it is... It doesn't even put a dent in what's happening with the water bill, with the fees that's continuously being charged. So it's almost like it's a purpose-defeater. And it happened because really it was a broken toilet at the home I rent, and I was out of town while the toilet consistently ran. When I came back, the water bill was $3,000. I contacted the water department. They came and, you know, checked everything, made sure there was no leaks or anything like that. And after that, then I tried to, you know, maybe make arrangements, because I'm unemployed. But it was nothing available, and they still shut the water off. And I had my daughter, me, and my granddaughter there. So it was nothing. And then I'm still being charged at least $60 per month.
Did you fill out one of those cards, those yellow cards?
This one?
Yeah. Can you give it to our clerk?
Okay.
And somebody will get back to you, hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah, can you star that one or something so that whenever it comes back? All right, thank you so much.
Okay. And thank you for hearing me.
And this does not look like the face of poverty, but I was in poverty at one time, and my son with asthma, our doctor who we'd seen for four years when I told him that my husband had a mental breakdown and wasn't working anymore, he said, "We don't take charity cases." So I don't know what you're going through, but it doesn't look like I've been through it, but I've been through it.
Baby, that's the prayer.
Right, yeah, poverty isn't a crime, but it isn't exactly an honor either. Thank you for coming.
Yes, it's a struggle, and it take a lot to, like you say, maintain. It takes a lot, you know? And then I have to do this for myself, as well as my granddaughter, who does suffer from asthma. She's on a nebulizer. She's seven years old.
Thank you for coming, and God bless.
Thank you for hearing me. You all have a wonderful day.
Anyone else for this particular public hearing? That's yours is later? Was it about the... Is it about, like, water bills or late false alarm bills or something different?
It's probably public comment.
That's... There's going to be a third, if you can believe it, there's going to be a third chance. So if there's no one else to talk about this, we'll close this public hearing. Sorry? Oh, some more things to read. All right. Deputy Clerk Williams has written objections that she will read into the record.
For a special assessment 708, billable utilities, the following are people who wish to have theirs reconsidered. Address at 14097 Lincoln, 23860 Majestic, 81309 Mile Road, 81369 Mile Road, 81389 Mile Road, 21900 Harding, 23000 Eastwood, 13011 Oak Park Boulevard, 23421 Clover Lawn, 21350 Ridge Dale, 24320 Onida, 21111 Kipling. And those are the ones that I have written for 708. For a special assessment 709, false alarms, I do not have any written objections. Special assessment 710, property blight, address to reconsider is 21921 Eastwood Street. For a special assessment 711, sidewalk replacement, I do not have any written objections.
All right, thank you. Now I declare the public hearing closed. I'll entertain a motion to adopt special assessment resolution number nine, confirming the rules and withholding the noted temporary exceptions in special assessment resolution number 10, setting the due date of November 14th with penalty for the special assessment district 708, 709, 710, and 711. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. That was a long motion.
Any discussion? I would just like to say that if you had an issue about that and you object to it, they will look into your objection. If it was assessed in error, they will go back to their photographs and everything and look through them for you. We try... If you call, if you come in and talk, we will look into your objection. And if it was done in error, we will take it off the list. And if it holds up, then it will continue on with the... It's like a credit card charges you extra for any unpaid balance. So there is a second and a discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ratner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We don't have communications, special licenses, accounting reports, bids, ordinances, or anything from the city manager until later. Director, correct?
I have one.
Say it again.
Under city manager, one. 15A.
Right, right, right. So we're down to 15. Number 15, city manager, Director Cooper. Would you introduce this issue? And Director Maroni, would you come up to explain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Director Maroni.
Thank you, Director Cooper. We have received grant application from Danny Calatton of... who owns, um, several properties, actually eight units on Nine Mile Road. They have five businesses within them. And he has planned for a complete facade replacement, um, at all of those, uh, units, all eight of them. However, since he only has five businesses, he's, he qualifies for a facade grant for five.
Right.
Um, the maximum grant amount is $2,500, and that's a 50% grant match per business. And he is investing $79,500 into, um, the renovations. And it is my direction to City Council to approve $12,500 as a facade grant reimbursement for him to do the work. And the money is available in the Quarter Improvement Authority Facade Improvement Budget.
Okay, so that is the $2,500 that we always give, times five for the five businesses, comes to $12,500.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the facade improvement grant? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And who's the second? Thank you. This is also money that the city is spending to make the city look better. To make the city look better, to, to give us some Oak Park pride. So, um, to encourage businesses to improve their facade and make it a nicer-looking, more inviting place to shop. For us and for, and to bring other people here. Any discussion?
Just want to say I love this program and my barber shop is actually in that, uh, one of those five businesses that I've gone to since a kid. My, my barber's been there for like 30 years, so it's pretty cool. It's good to see it redone, so.
Nice, it will look better. Uh, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ratner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I can close the City Manager portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Now it's called, now it's called to the audience for any other, um, issue that you have that isn't related to those other two. We've got... Thank you for your patience. Give us your name and, oh, um, give the yellow card to our, um, our clerk.
Oh, what?
The yellow card, yes. Sure, of course, oh, yes, absolutely.
Good evening, everybody. My name is, uh, Silver Haywood. And, um, I'm a resident of Oak Park for 37, no, 35 years. And I just got elected as being the President of the Concerned Citizen. And that covers, um, Kenosha, uh, Gardner, and Church.
Oh, the Concerned Citizens Block Club?
Correct.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
You know that the mayor and council will come to any of your meetings and talk and explain, give you an update and...
And this is my first meeting to attend. And, uh, I have really, um, enjoyed it and everything. Now I know how it goes, you know, so, but anyway, um...
They're not usually this lively.
I'm sorry?
Our meetings are not usually this lively.
Oh, oh, really? Oh, okay, well...
We usually fall asleep, at least one of us usually falls asleep during the meeting.
Oh, well, I'm not here to break no rules, okay? So, but anyway, I do have some issues in the city. Uh, Oak Park, Oak Park is a very beautiful, nice place to live. Uh, but my issue is, it's a house on the corner. And I think they are, they're not homeowners, they're renters. The only time his yard get cut is when I have to call the code enforcer. And when Oak Park comes out to cut the lawn, they only just cut. They don't trim the bushes. They do not, uh, pick up the grass and put it in the, in a, uh, the, uh, container or anything. They just cut it and it's left right on the lawn. So I guess that's the, usually the way they do it. And he, and you know, and I don't mean to be, um, a, a, a bad, bad guy or nothing like that, but when you live in a community and their property is not up to par, it's going to take effect on yours. You know? So I am very concerned of the property and the street, especially the street I live on. Because if I keep my property up by the same token, I think you should do the same thing, you know, without being asked to do it, uh, you know? So, you know, it kind of upset me a little bit. So that's...
We're always concerned about the worst house on the block.
And you know what? And it has to be on the corner of all, of all places. It's a corner house.
Time limit, sorry.
That's, what do that mean?
Oh, just try and finish up what you had to say.
So, okay.
Because we have a, like a three-minute...
Okay, I'm going to move right on. Okay, so I have another question. I was told that in order for the, um, for the, not the lawn to be cut, but the bushes to be trimmed, you would have to sign, you would have to sign, uh, a, a form or something and the council has to sign?
I'm not sure.
You know nothing about that?
No.
So what is the criteria for someone to come out and trim the hedges?
Somebody from the city?
I don't...
Huh?
Somebody from the city to come out and do that?
No, I'm asking. Because I was told that when they come, when they, I was told they do not do that.
Yeah, we don't, the city doesn't do that.
No, the city doesn't do that.
The city can have a ticket for blight, but that's, i- if it rises to the level of blight, that's really all we could do. We don't...
So what you do in a process like that? Or what you do, I mean...
Let me, um, can you talk to our Director Maroni over there in the corner?
Okay, my time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Yes, yes. Please come.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Phillips. I've been a resident of this great city since 1986. Uh, I live on Needen in Oak Park. Um, I just wanted to put on the official record, this is something good. I'm not complaining about anything, but I want to be on the official record.
No, you're not welcome here.
That my family and myself and my wife and my kids really appreciate the fact that the city of Oak Park and all the committees allowed us to paint a mural in the dog park in memory of our son. Uh, it means a lot to us. Um, and we really appreciate the fact that the city, after all the, whatever happened, i- it's there and it's beautiful. Having said that, I want to invite everybody, we're having a dedication on the same day as the grand opening.
When it's, give us again, Sunday?
Uh, Sunday, um, October, I nearly forgot.
Sunday, October the...
October the 15th.
15th?
Um, at 10 o'clock in the morning. It's not going to last for any longer than 15 minutes because we have a grand opening to get to. Um, but we're going, my kids will be here and we're going to unveil a plaque on the, uh, on the wall. And everybody from Oak Park is, is just welcome to come and see the dog park and help you with it.
Come and see the dog park, come and see the mural. Come at 10 a.m. and they'll put up a plank in memory of his son.
Correct.
Who, um, was a dog whisperer. He worked for a dog rescue company and could take, uh, a dog that had been abused and frightened and calm him enough that he could be adopted out. So he was a special guy and we have a special mural in his honor. And we thank the family for contributing to that and, um, and making the city beautiful because we want the murals, we want the art in Oak Park.
And just so you know, the, the artist, if you've ever go see it, actually lives there.
In Oak Park?
He's actually from Oak Park and he won the prize in, uh, Grand Rapids, the, the art show that they have there. That's where I found out about him.
Oh, for goodness sake. Prize winner, thank you.
And he's part of Owens Bobcat Bonnies. Yeah, bit of advertising there.
Thank you. So come at 10 for the...
October 15th, 10 a.m.
For the 10 a.m. for the plaque and 2 p.m. for the dedication of the whole dog park. Correct? 12?
It's started, the, 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 the grand opening's at 12.
At 12, thank you.
12 to 3.
12 to 3.
You don't have to give up, you know, the all kinds of wonderful stuff to give away. And you don't need to be a member of the park. It's open to everybody, anyone.
Come at 10 for the plaque and 12 to 3 for the grand opening. Check out the new dog park. People have been asking me about a dog park since the day one that I started. And, uh, we're thrilled to have it there. And if we get, uh, we have a lot of Oak Park people signing their dog up to play. Um, it will be filled with Oak Park residents. If there isn't that much need, we'll invite, uh, Berkeley and Huntington Woods dog owners to, uh, come and join us, uh, depending on the usage. So you asked for it, you got it, and, uh, come on, see it. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Um, then we are on, um, let's see, call to the council and then close session and then adjournment. So call to the council. I would like, uh, if Benny could fire up the pictures, um, the absentee ballots went out. And, um, I turned mine in today and, uh, if, has he got them? Yep, there we go, there I am in my car. See that box? It's a new one. We had a different one up there, but I think Oakland County gave us a new, pretty one. And, um, that's, uh, the mayor voting and that is, um, Jo Lynn Williams. Um, she's better looking and younger and she's voting. We figured we needed one of those. Um, come on down, turn in your absentee ballot. Uh, if you choose, you can also vote, uh, eight days ahead of the election, starting...
October 28th.
October 28th. So you can come in and vote like, like election day, um, at the community center. Um, and so we'd like, that'll go out in the mayor's message and it will also, um, uh... Say it again? A mailing, you'll get a mailing about it, wonderful. Anything else about that? Okay, all right, we got that one. Then, um, let's see. Also, uh, uh, Tim has made up some cards because I said Granny is having a hard time using the, um, Gov QA. So everybody, I think, got one of these cards. And you can put your phone camera on this little square thing that you got. Everybody get one? Yeah? And, um, and you can put in, if you have a question for the city, if you want to report a problem to the city, if you want to request a service, like the lady who wanted, uh, Code to come out, this is the easy way to get there.
Wait, what do you do with that?
Use your phone and take a picture, like, like you do with menus sometime. Uh, newfangled thing in restaurants, sometimes they have menus and you get your phone on it and it takes you to the menu.
You just take a picture of that and it shows you everything you need about the city?
It takes you to the right spot.
How's that work?
Tim, you want to come up and talk a little bit?
No, no, I'm just giving you a hard time.
Oh, oh!
It's a generational thing.
There you go. Respect your elders, young whippersnapper. All right. Uh, anyone else? Councilmember Burns, any comments for the...
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Ratner?
Good night, everyone. You guys stuck it out all the way to the end.
Yep. Councilmember Whitehead?
Have a good night, everybody.
And, um, Benny, do you have any of those pictures from that event where they gave away the clothes?
I don't know, I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I don't know, they had an event at Einstein School. There must have been 50 volunteers there. And they were, um, giving away beautiful new coats. Kids, each kid got a shopper to take them around and select a coat, find the right size and let them pick one. Hats and gloves to match. They treated the kids like it was Saks Fifth Avenue. Oh, what do you think of this hat or this hat? Does it match your coat better? And just, they were adorable. They were just heartwarming. And the kids were thrilled, um, to be going around. The young lady just loved it. She loved her coat. She loved the new book she got and the hat and the gloves and the underwear. And it's just, these people do good work. And I want to tell you, it's called the Assistance League of Southeast Michigan. And if you want to volunteer or donate money, it is such a good, uh, good use of your money. Those guys I used to teach second grade with, uh, back in the day before I was, before I was the mayor. I was a second grade teacher. And now they're volunteers. They're just, it's just great. Um, anyway, thank you so much for coming. And we will now take, um, a vote to go into closed session. Pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Meetings Act to convene a closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communications regarding pending litigation for property at 21950 Eastwood and 3200 Oak Park Boulevard. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call? Yes.
We all vote yes.
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 Councilmember Ratner?
Sure.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Okay, we will go into closed session. We will come back to approve the minutes on city attorney. Will there be a motion after?
There will be a motion.
There will be a motion. So if you're real curious, you can stay till after the closed session. There will be a motion. So if you're real curious, you can stay till after the closed session.
...